Yeah. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Anthony. We're starting 10 minutes late from some technical issues. So let me now welcome everybody to a regular scheduled meeting of the City of Morro Bay Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, December 19th, 2023. I am Chairperson Bill Roshan, and I'd like to introduce the Planning Commissioners tonight. Vice Chair Mike Rodriguez.
Happy holidays.
Commissioner Joseph Ingraffia, and Commissioner Eric Meyer. We do have a forum, a quorum tonight. And so let me call the meeting to order. If we could start out with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America. To God for which stands one nation, under God.
Commissioners, any Planning Commission announcements? Hearing none, we can go right to public comment. Let me welcome everybody again to the meeting, whether you're here live or on the Zoom call. Welcome.
Good evening. Terry Simons, Morro Bay. I don't know whether you want to handle this as a consent calendar A1 issue or whether you want to handle it as an item not on the agenda. Technically, it's on the agenda. This is coming from the Community Development Department Tracking List. And on the tracking list, the item is... I'll find it here in just a second. Well, I had it a second ago. Well, fundamentally, there's a proposal coming forward to install Tesla parking stations, Tesla charging stations, behind the new coffee facility at the old Bank of America building. I questioned staff on that this evening because this is the first I'd heard of it on this agenda. My concern is, is that I was wondering how many parking spaces were going to be taken out of service to do that charging. And I was informed by the director that it doesn't matter because they're counted as parking anyway. And I just want to go on record tonight that I object to that, even though that may be what's in the code. It seems inappropriate to reduce the required parking on a parking lot to install yet another form of commercial enterprise as a way of counting parking. I don't know what the parking requirement for the new use is, the coffee shop, and they have an outdoor dining area. So I'm sure it's fairly substantial. But I am concerned of the precedent set by allowing a proprietary enterprise, which is Tesla, to install their parking, charging facilities in what should be parking for a specific business. That's it for now. More later. Thanks.
Thank you, Terry. Anyone else who would like to speak? Hi, Betty.
Good evening. Betty Winholz. I didn't know about what Mr. Simon just commented on. I would totally agree with him that that really needs to be looked into, see how it fits. My comment, I wasn't actually going to make a comment, but a business person mentioned it to me today, so I want to bring it up. And the reason I think it's okay to bring it up at Planning Commission is because we have an urban forest management plan, which I'm assuming you all are aware of and/or implement or responsible for because you're the Planning Commission. And that is the job that was done on the trees this last week, the trimming of making them really high up so they could put a lot more Christmas lights on them. And so during the day, what you see is a bunch of wood sticks for trunks now. And you really have to look up to see the greenery. And what used to be in that greenery were the nests for the... not the plovers, but the night herons. And I'm... This business person mentioned it to me because they had been told, "You touch those trees and you're in trouble because they're nesting sites for a protected species." And yet, the city allowed this tree trimmer to come in. And whether it was the city requesting it, or the tree trimmer requesting it, or the chamber requesting it, I don't know who instigated it, but they were allowed to go up. And I know that you can do that when the nests aren't active, but it certainly took away from where they annually come back to. So as a person who believes in our tree city and in our bird sanctuary, that becomes a problem for me, and it was for this business person.
Great. Thank you. Scott, do you have any response to Betty's comment?
I'm aware that the... Yeah. Well, maybe that's better. Okay. So I'm aware that the Public Works Department was looking at, you know, trimming some of the trees to reinstall lights. They installed lights several years ago, and a lot of the strands were out and those types of things. So I know there was a maintenance issue there. There was a request from the business community that they put new lights in the trees. And so that is, you know, the process that was followed with the City's Public Works Department in having the trees trimmed and then putting lights up.
Thank you. Chris, Anthony, anybody in the queue, please?
One moment. Commissioner, we have no raised hands.
Thank you. If no one else likes to speak, I'll close the public comment period and go on to the consent calendar. Commissioners' comments. Eric?
Yeah, as was noted in a letter from a resident. On item B1, and this is Agenda Item A2, the September 19th action minutes, I made a motion, which was then modified, although I'm not exactly certain exactly how it transpired because I haven't reviewed the tape. But essentially, there was a request made by members of us to lower the height of the northwest corner of the hotel on Morro Street. And then that applicant was asked to bring back to us, and Scott, some new ideas, which they subsequently have done.
Yes.
And perhaps Scott can speak to that in a second. But the minutes do not reflect accurately what exactly went down. So perhaps it could be corrected after reviewing the tape.
So we... So... Okay, if I speak?
Please.
Apologize. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Please.
I think it was... I'm happy that somebody pointed that out because normally, we would put down the direction that the Planning Commission gave in the minutes. And I'm not exactly sure what happened there. We have a new person doing minutes right now, and that may have somehow got lost in the translation. And then we had the person that was the planner, responsible for the project, also left the city. So it might have been what happened. But I'm happy to go back through and put back in the points that the Planning Commission made at that meeting. I have direct notes to the motions that were made and that type of thing. So I'm happy to do that if you'd like.
And just for the sake of the public, is it worth discussing the outcome? What has happened since, based on our direction at that time?
Yeah. So the applicant did redesign their plans. And then it was part of the direction that two members of the Planning Commission, Chair Roshan and Commissioner Meyer, would review the revised drawings. And that's taken place. Commissioner Meyer was okay with the iteration, the last iteration that we provided. Chair Roshan had a couple of other comments, and they've made, you know, changes to address his concerns. And now that is be moving forward to the building plans at this point.
And I guess I would say the successful part was they did redo the second floor plan, broke it in half. So it's dropped approximately five feet.
Yeah, five feet. Big change.
From the height that it was, which I think was a win, win for the city.
Yeah.
Do we need to pull September 19th for you to look at those comments?
I think I would because it's not just... I'm making...
I want to make sure it's...
Yeah, one word change. I mean, the resolution reflects the changes that were requested, and they're in there. But I would like to bring that back. There's enough edits that you should see it in its entirety.
So September 19th, we'll take another look at. Any comments on October 3rd or October 7th?
Yeah, I have October 3rd under B1, under the motion. It has Chairperson Meyer. It should be Commissioner Meyer. And on B2, it says motion maker, Chairperson Rodriguez. It should be Vice Chair Rodriguez. I'm just saying, these are... You know, they're not substantive, but we want to... Because Chairperson...
Roshan.
Roshan is the chairperson. Thank you.
I was absent on the October 17th, so I need to abstain from voting on that one, so maybe pull that separately.
So do we need to separate that out from the motion?
So I'd make a motion to approve October 3rd meeting minutes after those non-substantive changes.
Thank you, Mike.
I second that request.
Thank you, Joe. Would you poll the Commission, please?
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Chair Roshan?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. You're abstaining, correct?
Actually, I was only... I'm abstaining on...
You can ask.
That one was the October 3rd, where I was present, when I was not...
So you have to ask, Eric.
Okay.
So I vote yes.
Commissioner Meyer, thank you. I apologize.
So now I'll make a motion to approve October 17th, 2023 minutes.
And I second as well.
Okay. Would you poll the Commission, please?
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Chair Roshan?
Yes.
Both motions pass? Thank you. And we don't need to do anything on the advanced planning process list? Scott?
Not unless you have a question.
There are none. Let's move right to item B1, public hearing. I'd like to introduce case number CUP 22-09. The site location is 801 Embarkadero. Cindy, you're on.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Nice to be here tonight. Yes, this is a request for a conditional use permit application for the site at 801 Embarkadero Road. On the screen, the site is outlined in red. And I have also included some of the neighboring uses. And this includes Harbor Walk Plaza, the new two-story building that was just constructed located north of it, Rose's Landing to the south with the Morro Bay Boulevard Street and in between the libertine and Rose's Landing. And then across from that to the east is Centennial Parkway with an existing city parking lot to the southeast, just to set the location setting. Some site information... Well, and before I get into this, just to go over the project description, the applicant is seeking a conditional use permit application. And this would be as a combined concept precise plan approval and design review approval for demolition reconstruction of the libertine building. The project proposes to demolish a majority of the approximately 4,600 square foot two-story building. It would be reconstructed as a approximate 5,200 square foot mixed-use building, adding an additional 529 square feet. The project proposes a new seven-unit hotel on the second floor with public viewing deck, first-floor restaurant and coffee shop uses, and upgraded basement area for the libertine brewing business. Site improvements include multiple public coastal access enhancements, including a new 15-foot-wide Harbor Walk gap extension, replacement and sleeving of existing pilings, steel and... sleeving of wood pilings, as well as new dock and gangway, two side-tie boat slips, and multiple public access improvements to the adjacent street end by removing public parking in the street end to create a public plaza, along with master sign program approval. And on the screen is an image of the zoning map. The zone is in the waterfront zone district, planned development overlay, and S4 special treatment area. The land use is waterfront commercial. And the property, of course, is included in the waterfront master plan and downtown waterfront strategic plan areas. This is a city lease site, as is other properties on the west side of the Embarkadero. It's approximately 7,400 square feet in size. Included in the description is a lease boundary amendment for those portions of the west side of the building to enclose the proposed development within the lease lines. This is an old building. It predates city incorporation. And it has recognized city historic parking credit of 79 spaces. And as explained in the staff report, this is based on the original uses of the building. These are some existing photos on the site. Street view image at the top. Along the right, this picture was taken in January of '22. So you will notice that it is during that brief period of time when the Harbor Walk Plaza was demolished, but had not yet been constructed. And then the picture in the lower left was taken in August, and that presents a view of the building from the bayside. Historically, was known as the Fish Bowl, along with many other past business enterprises. This project was previously before the Planning Commission. It came to the Planning Commission in February of '22 as a conceptual review. At that meeting, the Planning Commission reviewed initial project plans that have since been revised with the CUP application. The Planning Commission gave feedback to the applicant in four primary areas. These areas were to, one, provide a full eight-foot street sidewalk, and the application includes this. Comply with the front setback for the building, as well as the second-floor front setback. Although the front setback complies, the second-floor front setback is proposed at 5 feet 4 inches, where 10 feet would otherwise be the requirement. This is more of a setback than what's in the existing building, but still doesn't meet the full 10 feet. The third comment was to change the architectural design to eliminate the sawtooth roof design. Planning Commission's feedback was that the design appeared more residential than commercial and also expressed a desire that the rooms, the hotel rooms on the second floor, be oriented such to maximize view from the bluff top looking over the building. And I'll have some images of this on the next slide. And then the fourth thing was to provide a 45-degree view corridor at the southwest corner. The original plan in the conceptual plans was angled similar to how the existing building is now. There was only a diagonal view corridor at the southeast corner. Waterfront master plan allows for corner lease sites to provide, to meet their view corridor requirement by providing a 45-degree angle. Although the applicant does provide view corridor at the southwest corner, there is still a small amount of encroachment, and I'll get into that in the presentation. In addition, after that February meeting, applicant did have subsequent meetings with Chairperson Roshan and now former Commissioner Stewart regarding architectural design input. And that is what the applicant has put forward and heated in their CUP submission. So just for comparison, the image on the top is what the February '22 conceptual plan looked like as initially proposed. And then on the bottom is that same elevation, but it shows the revised visual simulation. In the foreground is the proposed public plaza creation and then the building there next to it. Just for some additional views here. The... As I stated earlier, the Planning Commission's feedback was also providing discussion about not impacting views from the bluff top. And here is a visual simulation from the bluff top. In this picture, you see the... a simulation of the newly constructed Harbor Walk Plaza on the right for context, and then the proposed building on the left. The image here with this redesigned libertine building shows the open second-floor public view deck on the south side of the building with the hotel rooms oriented to the north to provide more lines of sight looking across the building. This is a screenshot from the staff report. But as far as development standards go, the project complies with all development standards except for in three areas. And these include the second-floor front setback height. The standard height maximum in the waterfront zone is 17 feet. Up to 25 feet may be allowed with Planning Commission approval upon finding of a significant public benefit. And then the third exception is the view corridor requirement. And so the image on the screen on the right side shows you the amount of that view corridor encroachment. It is a small area. In that image on the right, there's a blue diagonal line. This is taken from the staff report. And so you can see there is a part of the building that extends into that area.
Can I ask a question about that diagonal? That diagonal isn't from public bluff area. That diagonal appears to go over to private property. If I was in the bluff, that diagonal line that that blue line represents is from private property. Am I correct?
It's measured to the lease site boundary line after it's adjusted. In this southwest corner, the proposal includes making a lease boundary adjustment a few feet to enclose that vertical axis in the lease boundary. And so waterfront master plan, you would measure it from your lease boundary lines, that diagonal requirement. Yeah. Just to go over a few details here with the project. The project was reviewed under both the old and the new zoning code, AKA the 1997 and the '22 zoning code. We'll probably discussing this frequently in future projects. But in this situation, because the many portions of the project requirements are part of the city's coastal implementation plan, there are portions of the '22 zoning code that are not yet in effect until Coastal certifies them. And so that is why we are processing it as a recommendation for a concept precise plan approval because those are portions that need to be certified by Coastal. So that is why the 1997 zoning code was still applied. The project was deemed complete in February of '23. The next bullet does include, as I've stated, the three areas where the project is requesting an exception for related to setback, view corridor, and building height. The applicant's proposal for public benefit that the Planning Commission should consider when making its finding. The applicant's proposal includes 15-foot-wide Harbor Walk, lateral access where 10 feet would be the standard requirement, a second-floor public viewing deck, a new publicly accessible dock, and creation of new public plaza improvements, including a portable stage for community events, new sidewalk, electrical throughout the plaza, curb and street improvements, and a proposed pedestrian drop-off area. Then these next few slides, I'll show you how the floor plans and the site plan is laid out. The first floor plan includes the proposed restaurant with the main dining area, covered dining with open roll-up doors, and on the right-hand side, outdoor dining bordered by low landscaping. The hotel entrance for the second floor includes an elevator and lobby access area, and that would be accessible on the north side of the building, coffee shop on the northeast. And then on the left, in the green area, is the location of the dock and gangway. It does show the 15-foot Harbor Walk. And just for clarification on the plans, that 15 feet is measured from the edge of the table. And there are outdoor tables along the west side of that building. And so those tables don't encroach into the 15 feet. So it is the full 15 feet to the building, to the face of the building. It's a little bit more. And then along the southwest corner, the vertical axis as it wraps around, and then it would connect to that public plaza. And then you see here the diagonal lines representing the view corridor as well. A second-floor floor plan, which would include seven hotel rooms ranging from 280 to about 360 square feet. The blue area represents what would be available as part of the public access available to the public. And that is the second-floor public view deck. And the stairs and elevators are highlighted in a darker blue. With each of these hotel units, they are oriented in a north-south direction. After we reviewed and deemed this project complete a couple of months ago, we did get an alternate second-floor floor plan that is included in the staff report and for which Planning Commission should review and to determine acceptability. This would be the alternate second-floor floor plan. These rooms are slightly smaller, still the same seven rooms. The revised plan shows the two westernmost rooms facing to the west instead of all of the rooms facing north-south. They would still have the same small fenced patio area adjacent to the public view deck. And then the basement level, the area, excuse me, in green is the brewing area for the business, along with cold and dry storage and other mechanical and equipment storage, and then laundry and linen for the hotel. So these are some proposed elevations. The next couple of slides, you'll see the elevations. The applicant, of course, after getting the comments from the Planning Commission, revised the design to reflect a modern maritime design was the goal. The project includes materials commonly found on the waterfront. Included in their color materials board is the cement plaster metal panels and cement fiber boards. The revised architectural design and choices of material types creates a wood and steel finish look to the building with a sleek, modern design. The applicant's proposal for a two-story development, although similar to the existing two-story building that is there currently, improves the views from the bluff and the blue and the view corridor with the reduction in height on the... where the public view deck is. And on the left image here, and I don't think I have a way to point to the screen, but the left image, there is a red dotted line that shows the outline of where the existing two-story building is. And so you can see that area of building mass that would be removed with this new project. Thanks, Scott. The north elevation here is... This is the north and the south elevation. The north shows you the neighboring... It shows the... Sorry, excuse me, the hotel check-in front door. And then there is a dashed line on the top that shows the outline of the Harbor Walk Plaza's development and their exterior staircase. Hotel guests would check in to the libertine lofts, proposed hotel, and that would be the access way between the libertine and the Harbor Walk Plaza. The south exterior elevation here, this provides a close-up view of the various uses there. The first-floor restaurant, covered dining, outdoor dining, and the exterior staircase that would provide access to the public to the view deck. To maximize coastal access, staffs recommending a condition of approval that the public view deck be made open and available during daylight hours. You'll see that in your resolution at Planning Commission 6. To offset the requested exceptions, applicant's proposal for public benefit includes, as stated, the wider Harbor Walk, the second-floor public viewing deck, publicly accessible dock, and also, which you can see these items on this image here. And then it also includes, as required, the proposed coastal access signs that's on your plans on Plan Sheet D1. This includes the standard dock and Harbor Walk coastal access signage. Also is proposed a historical interpretive sign relating to the history of this area as a working waterfront. In addition, as public benefit, the applicant, as stated, is funding and is proposing funding installation of the public plaza improvements, portable stage for community events, electrical, curb and street enhancements. The concert layout plan would be in this area here in the blue area. It does involve removal of 11 public parking spaces to create this public plaza area. This is consistent with the city's general plan and local coastal plan policy, CIR 2.2, which identifies removal of public parking in these various street ends that the city has. And coincidentally, this also goes back to earlier development of the city's planned Morro Bay project when in the downtown waterfront strategic plan, one of the top public improvements identified... public improvements identified by the general plan advisory committee was creating an outdoor performance area. And this achieves that with this proposed project, which is what the applicant is offering. As a public benefit proposal, the applicant is also proposing use of the public plaza as a concert venue that could be available during summer weekends, free to the public, similar to other local communities, or also potentially available for events, weddings, farmers markets, fairs, et cetera. These visual simulations provide a more close-up view of the proposed color and materials and the design. On the top right is that north elevation with part of the accessway between the two buildings visible. And this image on the lower left is the southeast corner. And then some additional images. And then here in these, you see part of the concert plaza. Sorry, the public plaza, not concert plaza. And then on this image is the color and materials board and proposed landscaping. There is approximately 250 square feet of proposed landscaping as quantified on the landscaping plan. Most of the landscaping would be in this area that is bordered by that outdoor dining. The proposed planting schedule identifies plants that would be at mature height, no taller than 18 inches, and it meets water requirements for being low water use and native plantings and drought tolerant. The lighting fixtures also are included in the project plans. It includes a combination of wall sconces and bothered lightings. Staff did verify that the proposed lighting specifications do comply with the city's new lighting ordinance requirements and the new zoning code related to maximum Kelvin color temperature and CRI lighting levels. Nonetheless, Planning Condition 16 is recommended to ensure that the specific lighting specifications are included with the building permits of middle. Next is the proposed master sign program. This is a feature in the city's new sign code. In the new sign ordinance, the sign ordinance requires that signs be itemized by facade, and it specifies a maximum of signage. The applicant does not exceed the maximum signage that would be allowed under the new sign code for the signs. There are two areas of note for the planning commission to provide direction on, and that is the, there are two pub signs that are proposed on the east elevation. Under the sign code, they're required to be 30 feet, a minimum of 30 feet apart and a minimum of 15 feet from the edge of the building face, with the goal to be avoiding cluttering. In this situation, the building's not even 30 feet wide, so they would not be wide enough to meet this requirement. And then in addition, around the, at the northeast corner, there is a proposed pub sign for the libertine loft building, which you see in the top right corner. And so included in the recommendation request is direction on if planning commission is supportive of allowing the two pub signs on the north elevation. The pub sign on the east elevation, the pub sign on the north elevation can comply if it's just moved 15 feet away from the edge. But on the east elevation, per code, it would only be otherwise required to have one pub sign. And that can be approved through the CUP review.
Can you just clarify, are they requesting two? Sorry, sorry, sorry.
I'm almost done, sorry. So as proposed, the project, as evaluated in the staff report, can be found consistent with the waterfront master plan and the DWSP. The project does include the required lateral access, view corridors with the small encroachment and sidewalk improvements, which are amenities in the waterfront master plan. In regards to DWSP guidelines, it improves overall public views through the site, through the reconstruction and redevelopment of the site. It includes those character-defining elements and architectural quality through its proposed use of material and design. And the project has also been conditioned, as required by the LCP, to require provision of low-cost visitor-serving accommodations pursuant to our new LCP requirements. Although the project is requiring exceptions for that second floor front setback, that portion of the southwest view corridor, and requesting the building height to go up to 25 feet per the planned development overlay, planning commission can recommend approval of the project based on finding of significant public benefit as described and by the applicant's offer. Planning commission should also include direction on the proposed alternate second floor plan versus the original one, and then whether it supports allowing two projecting signs on the east elevation to be less than 30 feet apart. And so with that, staff's recommending the planning commission board a favorable recommendation to city council to approve the requested CUP by adopting Resolution 1923. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Cindy, Eric.
I guess I'm just looking for clarification on the sign. Is the applicant requesting two separate signs on the east facade? Is that what, and we are being asked to make a determination on that?
Right. But the reason this came up now, and it wasn't like asked for a correction in the plan, is because the plan showed that there was 30, that the distance was 30 feet apart. But when it was scaled, it was determined that the projecting signs, that that was a misprint on the signs. So they are requesting to have two signs on the east elevation.
And are these signs parallel and plane with the east facade, or are they perpendicular?
They're projecting. They'd be perpendicular to the facade.
Is there an elevation that shows that?
Uh, yeah. So I think, can you see my mouse? So there is a projecting sign here, and there is a projecting sign here. This distance is about 23 feet. This distance is about 23 feet apart.
And those are both signs for the bar and grill slash restaurant? Or are those, one of those different than the other? In other words, it's one for the hotel and one for the bar?
One is for the hotel. And then the one on the right, I believe, is for the libertine coffee shop. And when the applicant comes up and speaks up public comment, he can fact-check me on that. The other issue is it's not just whether you would want two projecting signs in this location, but the sign code would also require them to be a minimum of 15 feet from the edge of the facade. So the building's not even, is not wide enough to comply with either of those requirements. So you have, you have these two signs here, and then if we go to the north elevation, there is another sign right here. And the applicant is happy to take this sign, oops, is to take this sign and move it down closer because it would be a libertine loft sign, and it would be closer to the front door. That would solve that issue. But the way the code reads expressly is that one of these signs would have to be removed otherwise.
And do you have the dimensions of those signs?
Yes, they are. Our sign code requires that projecting signs be a minimum of four square feet, and I think that that's what they are. But I could look on the plans while there's discussion.
I'm not so concerned with the minimum. I was concerned with the maximum. So if they're, if they're meeting the minimum.
Yeah, yeah. I think originally they were too small, and we said you have to make them bigger.
There was a corner rendering there, Cindy, that kind of shows the signs. Could you go back a couple?
Sure. What was the?
I don't know. You just flipped through it. It was a rendering that showed the corner.
Oh, okay.
Right there. Does that show?
Yeah, right there. Yeah, that's what it looks like, yeah.
That's what we're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, this is the sign on the left.
Okay. Other questions?
You kind of, I want to jump on the back of what Eric's trying to get at here. I know we're going to have to make an architecture review and a design review as part of the staff report. There was, now, does all this play into that finding? So, you know, we're trying to capture all this. It was a lot of good information, but we're going to have to capture all these changes and approvals as part of our review.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so the only, the only.
We should have a checklist of what we're trying to prove, including the second floor renderings, option A or option B, right? We want to get those. Is that going to be part of that, too?
So the only two changes are whether the planning commission, which second floor they want, and what your desire is on the pub signs. The design review functions in the same way that the planned development overlay does. And so the analysis in the staff report addresses compliance with waterfront master plan, downtown waterfront guidelines, and those zoning requirements. And so it's for planning commission to deliberate its consensus on that.
Yeah, I was just trying to make sure we're thread them into the right needle type thing, right? Get them in the right spot.
Right, yeah. So it's, and all of those findings are included in the resolution. And then it would, and I can double-check. The sign information may already be in the resolution as a recommended condition.
Thank you.
Other questions, Mike?
No.
Joe?
Just excellent presentation, Cindy. I'm assuming that the current structure is 25 feet tall. It appears to be taller than the building to the north. Is that correct, do you know?
The bill, the building to the north was approved as 25 feet, like it went all the way up to the 25 feet. And we have since received a height certificate for that new building that showed that it complies with the height.
And then with respect to the proposed plaza at the street end, I'm assuming maintenance would be the city's responsibility, or am I wrong about that? Would that be the leaseholders?
I'm going to let you take that one.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Just who would be responsible for the maintenance of the public plaza should it be built? Would it be the leaseholder or the city?
It's something we'd have to work into the lease for the property about what exactly they're maintaining, what exactly we're maintaining.
And I think from the file, the indication was that the applicant intends to put tables on the public area and use that as a service as well? Or am I wrong about that?
There aren't no tables proposed in the, in the actual public plaza area. There is outdoor dining tables along that southeast corner. The resolution does include a condition for two benches to provide for, you know, public use of that area at any time of the day. And that's consistent with other waterfront projects where whenever there was like a plaza area, the city and coastal have always, you know, favored having public seating in that area.
Okay, so at this point, there's no plan to make that a restaurant-serving area?
The plaza? No, no, no.
And then I didn't notice any, any suggestion of planting landscaping in the plaza area. Is, did I miss that, or is there no landscaping in it?
There is no landscaping right now, and, and the thinking was is at, at some level, to keep it flexible, because it's still early in the phase. They're, they're paying for the installation of creating the space, putting down the decomposed granite surface area, putting in the electrical, a stage area, and then how that looks over time, I think that would be, to be determined. And certainly if, you know, the commission wanted to see landscaping in that area, then that could be a discussion item.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Cindy, nicely done. A couple of quick questions. The two plans that were presented, is one preferred by the applicant, the second plan? Is that a preferred plan on the second floor?
Well, I'm not certain. I don't want to speak for the applicant, so.
All right, we'll wait and ask.
Yeah.
My other question, the, the, any lighting proposed at the applicant's cost for the plaza?
At this point, the, the project plans do not include any lighting in the plaza area, no. I mean, there, there is, you know, adjacent city street lighting that would.
Has staff considered that?
We did talk a while ago about this with the harbor department about what that might look like and with public works briefly. We don't have a decision. It's, it's some of the things that, like, we still need to work out internally about exactly what that's going to be and who's going to, who's going to pay for it. There's opportunity because there's, you know, electrical out there that the city already pays for. That could be brought into it if the city were going to pay for.
Okay. And again, if you could just run through the list, the questions for us are the plan choice, the signage issue, the, the front setback. Are there any other requests? Is that it, the three?
Well, I mean, they are requesting exceptions to second floor front setback, view corridor, and height. And those are covered in the findings. The only thing that is in addition to that is which floor plan does the commission support, and the signage.
Got it. Okay. Thank you very much.
If there's no, Mike, one last comment. I just wanted to thank past chair, Susan Stewart, and our current chair, Roshan, for doing the redesign. We really went a long way. So I just, if you look at what we started with and where we're at now before we open it up, I just, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, Eric? All right. If, I'd like to go right to the applicant's presentation. And Eric, welcome. Nice to have you back.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name's Eric Newton. I'm the proposer on the 801 Embarkadero project. I want to first thank city staff, Scott and Cindy, for their assistance in navigating this process. I also want to thank Cindy for the presentation. You know, it was perfect. Thank you. I also want to stay, thank you, or thank some of the commissioners through this process. They gave a lot of input, had a lot of guidance through this process, and ultimately got us to where we are today. I understand that this design process took a little bit of time. We went through a couple of renditions. There was a lot of hurdles to jump over. Also, we had a lot of requirements to adhere to and try to vet out throughout this process. But I think collectively, we created the best design, the best concept possible for this project. There were some really cool attributes that we put into the design here, and not only for the applicant itself on this, but we also put some things in there for the city to prove off in the future and bring new programs to the city here, too. I've had the pleasure of building several projects throughout the central coast, but I'm, I'm truly excited about this one and, and what it will do for the city of Morro I'm really looking forward and moving forward on this and going to the next step and ultimately starting construction on this. If you guys have any additional questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them anytime through this meeting. Also, you had two questions on the signage and the plan. The signage, we put flag signs on both sides of the corner right there, more for informational and directional, to point out what direction where the coffee shop is and would point out where the hotel lofts were going to be. So it was more giving people information where to go rather than like being confused. And then the plan view, obviously, we're pushing for doing the two rooms on the harbor side just for, you know, the tax for the city and just giving it more of a view for two more rooms right there.
Okay, if you could stay up here with us for a second. Commissioners, questions for the applicant? Let's start with Joe.
Thank you. Well, the first will probably be the most significant question. I noticed that there isn't the 10-foot setback on the Embarkadero, the east facade of the, of the building. Could you explain why you're, you don't have a 10-foot setback?
Yeah, we were having the design consistent to what we had with the original building. We're trying to kind of leave the facade or the image that was there before. So we were trying to push that, keep retaining some kind of aspect of what was there before.
I understand. Well, this, the pub is, is one of my favorite, if not my favorite locale in Morro Bay. And I suspect I know the answer, but it has a kind of a wonderful rustic interior look with thick beams and all that. I imagine that's all going to go the way, go away when it, that is demolished. Am I correct in that?
Correct, yes. It's time for the building to move on and us create something new there. We're going to try to push more of the pub area into under the cover, covered area right there and kind of shift it from the, the front where the. and kind of shift it from the front where the Embarkadero Road is right there.
Okay. And I'm also assuming that, and probably the commission will discuss it later, in terms of signage with respect to the second-story public area, that visitors to that deck area can be there without any obligation to dine or participate in the business. To make it clear that the public can be there without the dining, the paying dining public. Is that true?
Yeah, that's what we're shooting for on that. Obviously, we've got to go ahead and consider the guests and how that whole business would operate on the second floor with the units there to rent, but our intention is to go ahead and have certain hours during the day where it's open and where there's no restrictions there.
Right. And that's my last point, would be the sort of the ambiguity as to certain hours and with respect to management. At this point, you don't have any more specific plans as to when that public area would indeed be public? Is that correct?
Yeah, there's no plans in there, but we would like to use it for events and the ability to go ahead and rent that area out with, you know, a service, services up there, just so the public and/or any private parties can take advantage of that.
Well, I guess I was getting at, when could a member of the public walk up the steps and actually sit there and look at the view of the harbor? We'll need some specificity with respect to that, but I understand we don't have it yet, but we will get there.
Correct.
I think that's it for right now.
Mike? Yeah, first I'd like to say that I've been by that libertine maybe 100 times, at least 100 times, and you never really look at something until it's in front of you as a decision-maker. So I spent 45 minutes there today, every angle, every view, every side, front, back, everywhere. So that's for information purpose. So the one thing that I was thinking about, and I actually went to the front, was the lease line adjustment for the water lease. Explain that to me. I saw the piling, you know, the lease line adjustment. I mean, that, you know, it's just something I read about, I saw it, but ask me why that's happening, or why you want that.
The lease line adjustment on the south side?
On the water lease. West, west, I guess, right? I mean, I'm reading off the report, and I'm asking myself, what's this lease line adjustment all about? That's kind of what I'm asking.
Cindy, could you--
I think I can answer that.
Good.
It's not uncommon on the waterfront where the city will make adjustments to the lease boundary area, because if they are doing development in Tidlin's area, we want an ability to capture that in the lease.
Okay.
And so, the lease, the water lease adjustment is only to extend the water lease line out to encapsulate the new dock and gangway into the applicant's lease site, since of course we wouldn't want someone to make improvements to an area that's outside their legal control.
Yeah, okay.
It's just a minimal--
So it was more staff-driven versus applicant-driven?
Right, it's, yeah, it's for purposes of the lease management.
I just wanted to clarify that. Why was the applicant asking for that? But now you've told me--
I think the reason was that is that we were, the intention that to have our harbor walk meet up with our next-door neighbor's harbor walk, and that's what forced the lease line adjustment regarding that.
Okay, good. And then the other question I had was, what the chair had, was what plan did you want for the second floor?
Two rooms on the harbor side is what we're looking for.
Okay, so that terrifies, okay. And then, as I was walking, I saw this maybe for you or staff, but, so the gallery is not too far, Anderson, and how tall is that building?
The gallery's 25 feet.
Okay, good. And then we have the new, your new neighbor right near you, how tall is that building?
25 feet.
25 feet, okay. Just to clarify for the record, so you, and it looks like regarding the sightline, the sightline, we tried to get that 45-degree sightline. You said you did the best job you could do.
Correct, and we're compliant on the east side. And the west side, we're almost there, but the, one of the reasons why we're pushing to go ahead and have it the plan the way is that we're on our, the space to the south of it, we've got 10 feet coming off the building for a harbor walk right there, and then we added additional 15 feet beyond where our seating is on the harbor side. So it kind of absorbs that, and it makes it minimal on the 45 right there.
Okay. Well, thanks, that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Eric.
I should disclose that I had ex parte communications with the applicant on the telephone yesterday. With respect, I'm stuck on these little signs on the front, sorry. You mentioned, somebody mentioned that these are mostly directional signs. You were hoping they were directional signs, kind of. I see them as being these small little signs, but then I hear that our sign ordinance has a minimum of four square feet, and that's just something I think we should discuss later. But just to clarify, you said absolutely you were looking at those as more of an informational, directional sign, rather than a big like, here we are sign?
Yeah, correct. It's more like when people are walking down the street and they see kind of the directional side, like, oh, here's the lofts area, or here's the hotel entrance, and then also the ability to see, okay, there's the coffee shop, and it kind of leads you right to it. That was the intention there.
And then I think there's gonna be some discussion around the stairs. I don't know if you've seen, there was an email that came in, which has made some good points, and moving those stairs slightly to the east such that they didn't pinch the vertical access along the side of a little conference room area, so to speak, where the horizontal access intersects into the vertical access.
Yeah, correct. I can answer a few questions on that. There was one plan that Gene did for the harbor walk area in the back, or for the west side right there, and it kind of encroached into the middle of the building. If you look at one of the other drawings, our attention is to go ahead and remove that space there, so it opens it up a little bit on all the plans except for that one right there. And then the stairs, we moved in that spot just to have several windows where the conference room and the conference room, in order to go ahead and open that up so people could see outside into the plaza.
Cindy, could you show us a plan to what Eric's talking about?
I'm just interested in the width of the vertical access adjacent to the staircase, the public access. It drops down to, I'm gonna guess--
It would be a floor plan of that stair connection.
Do you want the elevation or the floor?
The plan.
Okay.
Plan that also shows the harbor walk would be, there you go.
Oh, I have a better one, hold on a second. How's this? Right here, the--
Yeah, pretty good. I guess the blue section there, right through the word access, the second S, that area is a lot less than the 10 feet, because it's, the stair width less than the 10 feet of vertical access, and so it's probably dropping down to, I'm gonna guess, 6 feet maybe? It's hard for me to say without actually having a scale. On my plan, it looks significantly different than it looks on that plan. I'm looking at the construction site plan on page D2. Well, I'm gonna make some comments later. I was just kind of, I think those stairs are pliable to some, you may not like it, but I think they're pliable a little bit to move them out. I think if we could get some more headroom under the stairs--
We can talk about that later. Anything else, Eric?
No.
I have, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, no, just a response on the stairs. There is a secondary reason for the stairs to be there, too, is access to the basement from that area, too. And one of the reasons to go ahead and open, enlarge the basement is to have the ability to keep items or storage items for the plaza area there, too.
So, Eric, you good?
Yeah, now I'm looking for the basement plan view. Go ahead.
So I have a couple of quick questions. One, thank you very much for being here with us and trying so hard. You did really a lot of effort to respond to the concerns. In this plan, you can see the planter that's going in the corner there. Is that continuous? And what is the planter itself?
The planter is just a division between the plaza area and the patio outdoor eating area right there. That's the real intent of it.
But is it like a built concrete, what is it? Do you know?
We were planning on doing a concrete board finish on that.
And it would be continuous, so there'd be no way to walk through there, right?
Correct.
And where does the public space, Cindy, overlap in terms of that sightline or the space?
So the intention is to go ahead and have the planter, the L-shaped planter right there, and then do a 10-foot walk along the front of that to get back to the harbor walk area? And then a transition into the plaza area from that 10-foot right there.
So I'm looking at the concrete planter, and then you're saying that beyond that, beyond the tables, that would be the public access?
Correct. You'll have one from the Embarkadero street side, and then another one from the middle of the plaza area right there.
And I guess I'm asking, just in terms of our harbor policy, Embarkadero policy, we want to try to keep the public space as open as possible. Is this public or private space at that point where the tables are?
So these tables are part of the libertine restaurant, so it would be outdoor dining for customers of this area. It's not presented as--
Right.
--just open free tables for anyone.
So those are, those are private space, actually?
They're private tables. They wouldn't be able to, this area here, on the right side of the diagonal line is view corridor area, so they wouldn't be able to have anything taller than 30 inches in the view corridor.
Got it.
And then, and then staff supports this border area, because the waterfront master plan encourages that dining areas be in defined areas with railings or other kind of bordered areas to--
Got it, okay. The decomposed granite, the discussion around maintenance is important, because decomposed granite takes maintenance. And if it's not well-maintained, it becomes problematic. So have you considered that, Eric?
One of the reasons why we went to do the DG side of this is the ability to go ahead and make modifications in the future. Right now, talking with city staff, there's no real, everybody's trying to define this plaza area and what's the plan. I think we made the provisions of putting electrical and water out there for the different things, and when the plan develops over the next couple of years, it's the ability to change things, add things, is--
That's a big advantage. So, but the ability to do the maintenance required to keep it tight and walkable, you're aware, and I guess I'm asking, are you gonna commit to that?
The maintenance of that, we'll have to discuss with the city on what the program, like, if they're gonna rent it out to different individuals, we can't be completely responsible for everything going on there, obviously. And I think the DG works well. I understand people's concerns about, maybe it's a maintenance issue, but if you put a couple binder courses in there, it'll hold up pretty well.
Yeah, no, I've worked a lot with it, and I, but I do know it takes real good routine. It can't be ignored, or it becomes problematic. So I'm not sure, we can talk about that later, how to resolve those issues. I guess the other question, have you considered lighting in the plaza? Is that of interest to you?
We talked about it back and forth with the staff a few times, and then I think it, we just decided that it's too soon to decide what the program requirements on there. I know I talked to you a couple of times about Bill, about putting a tent there.
Yeah.
As soon as you start thinking about other things going on in the future, you kind of lose the ability to--
To make it work, yeah.
--what's right and what's wrong on lighting right there.
Got it.
We have enough lighting on the building to light up that area in the walkway right there, and so does Rosa's, so, you know, obviously that'll transition into the middle of the area right there. And there is a, city staff does have a pole in the back right by where the dock is, and I'm not sure what was on the front Embarkadero area, but I'm assuming that there's something there, too.
So last question. I'm a big fan of the building, and when we talked early, you're keeping basically the floor plan on the first floor, so are we keeping the structure on the first floor? Is that the intent?
Unfortunately, over time, the whole building will be demoed through this process.
Is that what you're thinking now?
We tried, we tried to go ahead and retain some of it, and then it just, it just, it didn't work out.
Huh. And any further discussion? That's a change from what you proposed last time.
From what, when we first started talking about this, correct? We were trying to retain some of the building, and just, once you start going down this path and you seeing, you know, the, how the building is, the design development, how you develop it, it just wasn't--
So this is new, how about the basement? Is the basement gonna be rebuilt?
The basement will be rebuilt.
Wow.
For the new standards, yes.
Okay. That's it. Any other questions, Commissioner for Eric? Really, thank you very much. We'll have more to ask, I'm sure. If there's no other questions, I'd like to go to public comment. Cindy, is that okay with you? Okay.
Terry Simons, Morro Bay. Mr. Chairman, I have a little anecdote to tell you about. A number of years ago, I owned a piece of property in San Luis Obispo, and next door to me, there was a vacant lot. And it turned out that we could take advantage of the vacant lot and make it into a parking lot for our property, so we bought it from the next-door neighbor. We developed our property, and the next-door neighbor sold his property. And then the city came around and said, oh, well, you know, that property there is the historic parking for the property next door to it. And we said, well, that's all very interesting, but we happen to own this property now, and there's nothing in our deed or recorded title or anything that provides any historic parking for this building next door. I was particularly caught by the recognition of 79 historic parking spaces. I'd like to know where those are or were.
Scott, any input?
Maybe the applicant knows, I don't know.
Well, no, I mean, we, there's, I'll let Cindy answer the question.
Is, do you have more questions, Terry? Or is that--
That's it.
That's it.
I think it's a great project. I'm not here to attack the project. I just was caught by that particular language and my own personal experience, and it just rang a bell in my head and said, historic parking. I don't remember there being a parking lot big enough near this building to provide 79--
Okay, so staff, what do we mean by that?
The city has a longstanding practice of recognizing historic parking credit on the waterfront, and it recognizes buildings that were in existence as of when the city incorporated in the '60s, and it's based on those original uses of the building. Where are these spaces? Well, that's a good question, because clearly they're, we all know the history of the waterfront, and there were not massive--
So these are not deed-matched in any way?
Yes. They are based on zoning ordinance requirements for what the parking requirement would have been for those original uses. It is a practice that is, it's unique, I think, to the city, but it's also something that we've codified in the new zoning code that allows for this recognition.
Got it.
Terry, was your building on Marsh Street by chance?
No, it was over on Parker Street. But, thank you. I'm fascinated that this is yet something else we've cleaned up in the new zoning ordinance. I've never heard of anything like this, and the illusion that these 79 parking spaces existed because there was a use there, I find fascinating, but it is Morro Bay.
Yeah, and for Terry's benefit--
Thank you, Terry.
For Terry's benefit, that was the first question I had, is please explain the historical parking credit, 79 spaces, explain. I had that, but I understand--
So where's, commissioners--
We literally have calculations on most of the lease sites--
No, I'm going back to staff.
--for that parking. And it's a practice the city has followed for many, many years.
Sure, sure.
Others?
Yep.
Other public comment? Betty, welcome.
Thank you, Betty Winholz. And my first one was on parking also, particularly when you consider, in the staff report says there are five parking places being taken, and now it's saying there is 11 parking places being taken away. So those 11 must have been part of those 79, so is he really missing 11 parking places if you go the route of that rabbit hole? So, but I think parking is an issue. For me, parking is a public benefit, and I'm sorry that we're putting in a plaza rather than keeping the parking accessible for those of us who go down there. I want, have a question. The 7,400 feet that is part of this lease site, does that include the land that he's gonna be given that's public? land that he's going to be given that's public? And that he's going to be responsible for? Or is that seventy-four hundred up to the street end? And then he's encroaching to put in the electrical and the other things for this benefit of the city? I, I don't know whose property ends where. That was maybe part of the questioning earlier, like who's responsible for lighting? Who's responsible for paying the electric bill? All that cleanup, that kind of stuff? I think that's still very murky. Also, I'm, I'm a little bit questioning about the signage, not so much on the building, but because I don't know the distance between his neighbor to the north and him, and that people are walking down this corridor, which I'm hoping is at least ten feet wide, maybe? And that that's actually the entrance to the hotel instead of going up the stairs to the other side? That seems really awkward and, at night, dangerous. And then in addition to that, where's the signage that tells the public that they get to use the upstairs for public viewing? I mean, you're, you're, you've got signage for the coffee house, you've got signage for the hotel, but where's the signage that says this is public access? And where's the signage that says that people can go down onto the docks? And I'm not sure why that's a public benefit. Why would we want to go down into private docks? So I don't see that as a public benefit. I had a question as to where this five hundred square feet extra room is. And it sounds like it might be in the basement, that he's expanding the basement rather than the footprint upstairs. Just wondering about that. Absolutely the facade. One hundred, one hundred and fifty percent better. Thank you. Thank you for changing the facade of the building. I have a question about the elevator. I heard that the elevator goes to the basement. Does the elevator also go to the second floor?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so then people who want to go up to the, the viewing area, will they be able to use the elevator if they're wheelchair? So will that be wheelchair accessible?
Now, that's a good question, too.
And I, I, to me, it's not an advantage to have the boardwalk over the water to be fifteen feet instead of ten, because it seems to me that then the business owner ends up using that ten, that extra five feet to put in tables and then serve people food. So it actually becomes private usage rather than public usage. And so that's, that's a little, not just on this project, but other projects, that's come up for me. And I guess in closing, I want to say, I don't see enough public benefit to let the building be twenty-five instead of seventeen feet tall. The only thing I'm getting is the public access upstairs. Don't know if I can get to it if I'm in a wheelchair. And the sidewalks required, the boardwalks required, maybe the electrical's coming in, and really DG is awful stuff.
Okay. Thank you, Betty. Others? Public comment? Chris Anthony? Anybody in the queue, please? Thank you, Chair Roshan. Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue. Okay, last time to, last chance to talk, and if not, I'll close the public comment period, please. And commissioners, this is now our time to discuss and comment. You know, this is the, the second time with a lot of redirection from Eric. And I think there's some questions that we still need to take on. I think some, from staff, too. There's some floating issues in terms of maintenance and issues that I kind of want a proposal from you folks, how that will be handled. Let's say we say yes to this project, how do we know where that's going to go? Or how do you want to do it? So let's start there.
Okay. I mean, so we have talked about it. The idea is the plaza is public. The city would administer to it. The lease site holder would have access to it to have events and things out there as well. And so the likelihood is that it's leased out through our recreation division. That's the conversation that we've had internally. And the likelihood is that it would be hooked up, and the power would be paid for by the city, and the city would pay for that through the events that are, that happen out there. That's the, that's the concept right now. And then we would address, you know, use by Mr. Newton, probably through his, through his lease. Probably some shared maintenance there based on the amount of use he's talking about. And so that's why we would cover it in there. Might be some shared portion that, that he does based on his desire to have music and things like that out in the plaza.
So it would be, his shared portion would depend on the amount of events he...
So, yeah, we would, we would probably come up with, we don't know exactly what that, you know, what it's going to cost from an electricity standpoint. We don't have those numbers right now. And so we'd have to develop what that looks like. We just don't have the lease in place now, and he doesn't have a lease with us yet. He has consent of land.
Well, and, but the maintenance will be bigger than that, right? Just like DG takes time, right? It takes...
Correct. And that's, and so we've, you know, we've talked with the public works department a couple of times about this.
Yeah.
And they said they would work with us on the program. I mean, we haven't, you know, like, assuming they get approval type thing, so. Because it's, it becomes, it's city's property. So the city maintains the streets, they maintain all kinds of other things. This is just one of those similar things. It wasn't an issue like, oh, we don't want any part of that. They're just like, oh, yeah, well, you know.
Okay. So the, the other issue of that is access to the viewing deck?
Mm-hmm.
Right now, that's not defined either, right? The hours or...
No, no, it is. It's defined in the resolution, and I'll let Cindy speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we do, staff is recommending a condition of approval. It's planning condition six. That would limit any private use during daylight hours. So the applicant would be required to have that open to the public during daylight hours only. I know the applicant's proposal said that they would like to have that be private. But coastal commission would likely add this as a coastal development permit condition as well. That is not atypical at all. And if, and if the planning commission is tasked with finding significant public benefit, this is another avenue to provide that significant public benefit, is that this is accessible to the public. And to answer the public comment, the, if someone's on that public view deck, they can access the elevator. So if someone is non-ambulatory and they need elevator access...
And the applicants agree to that? That they can use the elevator to get the access they need during those hours?
I mean, it's, it's shown on the site plan that there is access by, direct access from the view deck to the hotel entrance, so...
Because I think that, you know, I can ask Eric, but that means going through the lobby somehow, right?
To, to get to the elevator? It, it'll go through where the lobby is for the, for the hotel.
Right. And so you'd have the public moving through there? Okay.
It'll be open during a certain amount of hours, you know, we've got...
Got it. And then to Betty's question, there would be signage, that would be required, right? Signage for the public access.
Right. So there is coastal access signage shown on the plans. It's on the dock plans. It's not on the same page as the commercial signage plan. And so it's plan sheet D1 that shows the typical blue and white coastal access signs, the dock signs. It's very typical that the coastal commission will require that that public dock, even, even if it's rented out to a private boat owner, coastal wants the public to be able to like, walk down on the dock and get close to the water. So that, that's why we put the signs there.
That is, that is a very unique experience. I mean, I, I think it's pretty cool that you, that we're able to do that, walk down on the docks. I mean, again, it's one thing to be up on the harbor walk, it's another thing to be able to walk down next to the water and dock.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, actually.
And you see during, during different times, people using it to get on, like, for instance, when the witches are out on the water, they, they launch from all over the harbor. You know, they launch in front of Rosa's, they launch in front of everybody. So they do get used, and kayakers come and go.
Witches and warlocks.
Okay, whatever.
So other public issues you think that are pending, that we would want to consider?
I have some additional comments.
We're going to keep going, yeah. But just in terms of staff's positioning?
No, I mean, just to kind of respond to some of the public comment that I heard.
Yeah, please.
The, the lease line amendment is only on the water side and in that southwest corner. The area where the plaza improvement will be, the land lease boundary will be flush with the public plaza. So when you have the staircase, you, you will have all of that vertical access because it will fan out into the public plaza as you're heading south on the harbor walk and you're walking around the corner.
Got it.
That will be all open. And then because, though, the street end is not part of the Tidlands Trust Agreement, and it is public right-of-way, we can't do a lease line adjustment to encapsulate the plaza. That will be, the mechanism to do that is through a special encroachment permit with the public works department. And that's reflected in the resolution. So just to be clear, we can only do lease adjustments in Tidlands area.
Got it. Eric, do you want to go through your stuff?
It's kind of along the same subject, and it's, it's, it's based on some previous experiences in other jurisdictions. When you take a public street and close it and make it a plaza, it, it becomes an attractive nuisance occasionally for certain activities. And those activities are hard to control when it's public space. And I'll, I'll speak specifically to Mission Plaza in San Luis Obispo, which is a public space, and which has a lot of activities, drug-related and otherwise, that occur, which are on, impossible to, not impossible, but very difficult to police because the public has every right to be there. And, and the solution sometimes has been for, when we were redesigning Mission Plaza the last time when I was in San Luis Obispo, the concessions that were going to be granted to various, this hasn't happened yet, mind you, but on paper it has, the concessions area was quite a bit larger than the actual facility itself. And thus, because it was a private leased area, they could, they could police that area differently than you would police a public street or a public sidewalk. And thereby, you could evict someone from, from taking up residence, let's say, in that private space. And I'm not saying that we have that problem in Moro Bay very much, but it, it is something that happens in urban areas where the, the public space is very difficult to police from panhandlers and musicians and so forth that just take up residence in given spots. That's one, one point. The, the next point is around, I'm stuck on the staircase and the pinch at the staircase. And I do realize the stairs go down into the basement as well as up onto the second floor. But at that point in the southern vertical access, which is a horrible definition of way to describe things, but that, that horizontal, that, that accessway which goes perpendicularly to the bay gets pinched. It's quite a bit narrower than ten feet, and it's been described all over these documents, exhibit B, et cetera, as a minimum of ten feet. And so I, I kind of question, maybe there's something we need to do, need to do right around that staircase, either, as was suggested by a, a letter writer or an email writer, a little diagonal addition to the harbor walk that allowed the east-west to intersect with the north-south in front of the private, in front of the, essentially what's now the public street. It could, if there was a triangle there on the corner adjacent to the stairs, it would widen up that area such that it wasn't just what looks to be about six feet wide. It's either that or, and/or moving that staircase some number of feet east, which, yes, might block one of those windows in the, in the little conference room, let's call it. But it's just, it's a discussion that needs to happen. I don't know the specifics of the waterfront master plan, whether they demand a ten-foot clear, but it clearly isn't ten feet clear in that location.
Yeah, it, it doesn't, there is not a mandate for ten-foot in that location. There is also, as Cindy pointed out earlier, the, the edge of the ten-foot area that would be on here, that would otherwise be on the lease site, is matched up at grade-wise to the plaza. So what is, it's quite a bit larger than probably ten feet for most of that area. The area where Mr. Green had proposed that maybe you create that angled space, it could work, but there's grade separation there. And when you have grade separation, it's a little small area like that, I don't know how you deal with handrails. I mean, like, the whole thing, I kind of took a quick look at it today, and I was like, God's tough. So, and you can't go any further over there because there's a gangway that goes down to the city's public dock right there. So there's a lot happening in a very small amount of space there. So it, it is constrained, I will say that.
It's just because of the nature of the way these leases are separately owned and separately developed, all developed at different time periods, that we have this higgledy piggledy quagmire. It's, it's, it's cute in a way, but it's, but it's, it's like walking around a little
It would have, it would have been nice, you know, back in the, early on, but even when we did the waterfront master plan originally, had we looked at all of the grades for those, and we could have like, said where they were all supposed to go, because we redeveloped most of the lease sites since then, and we didn't do that. So we kind of ended up with this one-off thing. I agree with you.
Then, then just back to the plaza for a little bit. The plaza has a lot of potential for connectivity to the other plazas across the street, as has also been brought up by Sean. And that, that, in that centennial staircase, we probably will be redeveloping in the next ten years, I would suspect, or somewhere in the next decades. That will, the way Front Street comes around and the way the, the restrooms are, and all of that has a lot of potential. So that plaza being kind of undeveloped is good, in my opinion, left, left for future use. But I, I do agree with Sean's letter about the park, the, the loading zone should be located outside of maybe the plaza view shed, so to speak, move a little, move northerly to some degree, so the loading zone on, for the hotel. And then I also kind of questioned the, the sidewalk along the Embarcadero there and the ramping of the sidewalk there such that it's, it's meets, it's, I think Public Works has asked for some, for a specific Caltrans design of the curb and gutter and, and ramping, I forget what it's called exactly, of, of the approach into that plaza. Am I correct? And does that mean that sidewalk then is sloping across that one section? Or are we, are we kicking the sidewalk westerly around the driveway approach? Am I making any sense there? I couldn't quite make sense of what was going on, on the plans with respect to that.
I'm not sure what you're...
There's a driveway where the street is now, between the parking, the current parking spaces, they, there, there is a driveway on the plan.
Right.
And that driveway has an approach which is sloped, I presume. And I just don't know, is all, because ADA requirements mean the sidewalk moves in, so it's level. I just haven't seen any of that on the plan. And I, I think it's something that needs to be discussed, and whether, why is that kind of driveway approach, it's not, there's no one actually going to be driving up there except for maybe rarely. And so perhaps some other kind of driveway approach would allow the sidewalk to remain level at the street's edge. These are just something I think we should chat about as a commission. The other thing, on the harbor walk, I know I'm all over the map here, I'm just trying to bring up all my points. The applicant has discussed having live music on any one of the three patios. And the three patios are described as the patio on the Embarcadero easterly side, and then along upstairs, the upstairs area, and then out in front of the restaurant. And it's been described that the music will not interfere with ten feet in width of the harbor walk on the westerly side of the building, but that harbor walk is otherwise described as being an unimpeded fifteen feet. And so I'm kind of questioning, is the band setting up on the westerly side of the harbor walk in such a way as it's pinching the harbor walk down to ten feet? And it's been requested that that band be allowed to be there some number of days, quite a few per year, then we're actually just getting a ten-foot wide harbor walk, and we're, and the applicant is getting an additional five feet out there? And so the public benefit falls back a little bit. Not that the band is a public benefit to some degree, but it's just worth discussing.
Okay. So your points are the stair? Your points are the stage? And your point is the driveway?
And the signage? I think that, to be honest, the four-foot square sign, if someone wants to put a little directional sign, I don't mind a small sign. I think that we should consider allowing a smaller sign if it's a directional sign. We don't have to make it, demand that it be bigger. That seems oxymoronic to me. I think signs should be diminutive and, and out of your face rather than in your face.
Okay. So those four points. Let's, Mike, do you have comments?
Comments for now? We'll just go ahead and go to Joe, because Joe's much more familiar with this.
Well, preliminary, I'm, I'm a little concerned. We seem to be going in a direction where a certain ambiguity will continue after this meeting. But for practical purposes, I...
Around some of the plaza issue?
Yeah. And this is the, you know, the prime bargaining strength that we possess right now. If we could resolve some of these things now, I, I just sort of throw that out for discussion. In the, in the private dining area, exterior dining area... In the, in the private dining area, exterior dining area, I wonder if umbrellas will become an issue, and that will block some of the additional public view, even though the landscaping is at a lower level. So we probably should have some constraint as to umbrellas. On the other hand, people want shade when they sit down and eat, and so we have to look realistically at what we are doing with that particular piece of view shed. Signage, you know, I've, in my years around the planning agency, I've seen often the, at least the initial inadequacy of the signage telling the public that they are free to go to these areas without restraint of, you know, of using the merchants there. So again, there's an ambiguity. I'd like to know where the signs are being placed to ensure that they're being put in the best place. I'm surprised that other members of the commission haven't brought this up with respect to the lack of a setback on the second-story frontage. I can appreciate that we're trying to replicate the architecture of the original building. However, I say to myself, but the original building is being torn down. And for the life of me, I can't, I can't believe that a straight two-story facade is an improvement over a facade that has a setback, particularly because we expected and were able to achieve that kind of a step back on the property directly to the north. So I would, I would have a difficult time without that second, the step back, setback on the second, let me finish, please. With respect to the stairway, I also would like to widen the area where the stairway is. I don't know what the engineering difficulties are with that, I suspect they're significant. But I would like to ensure, it's really key to communicating to the public that they have access to public areas by a consistency in the pavement. So whatever pavement is leading from the Embarcadero roadway towards the bay, we have to make sure that that pavement is duplicated as it approaches the stairway and goes to the north, so that we're telling people, yes, you can walk there without restraint. Let's see if I'm missing anything. And then finally, in terms of precedent for the, well, let me go back here for a second. I believe without question that the additional community benefit obligation is met primarily by the fact that the applicant is reducing a portion of the existing second-story structure to free up what is otherwise blocked view of the bay. And that in combination with the public plaza is pretty significant public benefit.
Yeah.
Again, with respect to ambiguity, I wish we could resolve at this point clearly what would be the responsibilities of the applicant in terms of the fixtures he invests in the plaza and his maintenance responsibility. I'm not quite ready to sort of defer that to later discussions, although I realize we might have to do that. And then the final point I'll make is that, however we decide this case, I think we should devote some explicit messaging as to why in terms of precedent, meaning there are numerous other leaseholds on the Embarcadero that are currently one-story or are second-story, and I can envision that they would be remodeled. And I want to be clear as to why we might be granting this height extension to 25 feet, and while a subsequent applicant might not get that benefit, because, and specifically because he's, that applicant might not be offering to reduce some of his second-story structure to free up viewpoint, and because of this rather extraordinary opportunity to create a public space next door. And again, for emphasis, I really would like this commission to examine the utility of having that second-floor setback as part of this plan.
So Joe, if it's, can I respond to some of that and maybe map this out a little bit? I'm going to try to focus this down on a couple of the key points. To do that, I'm going to take you through how the project got to this position based on community benefits. Right now, the building sits down there at 25 feet and blocks most of the view across the whole site on the second floor. What this plan is proposing is to reduce that to half, so taking down an existing portion of the second floor that would open that up. We felt that was a big community benefit. Not only does it open up the second floor, but it opens it up from the stair, the Centennial Stair going down, and it becomes, I think, a precedent for how to begin to look at this 25-foot idea of exception that the city has been willing to do for hotel rooms. So before I get to that, what I'd like to say is the community benefits that I think this project offers, number one is that. It's taking away half of an existing building to open it up. One reason that I think we allowed the facade to go up tall on the sidewalk side was because by taking that down, the applicant was losing hotel space. And we felt that the trade of getting half of it open was okay for that five foot on the walk side. In other words, he needed that to get the, I forget how many rooms you've got, Eric?
Seven.
And he had more than that before, and seven was the minimum. So part of the bargaining was that. Now here's where it gets a little complicated. We also allowed this because he was attempting to save the existing building. So the bar right now, which, we've left the bar where the bar is because that was existing at the last time we discussed it. Right now, that's all new, including the basement. So one of the things that, the concern about the pinch point in terms of the harbor walk, that could now be adjusted because we're not keeping that existing structure. So the ability to adjust that pinch point, which is one of Eric's points, I think, and we'll ask the other Eric what he thinks, but that's doable now where it wasn't before. The other community benefit I see is not just opening up the second floor, but creating a public terrace that's really visible and I think highly usable. That there are other public spaces throughout the harbor walk, and they're difficult to find, they're kind of isolated, this one is not. This one is going to be prominent, and so I think it will truly become the opportunity for a public space. Finally, the plaza, hard to not say that's not a public benefit. And I'm not sure if everybody's going to agree that the plaza is a good idea, but I do, and I do agree with staff. I think creating events down there will do nothing but benefit the whole harbor walk. I think parking, that we have to turn in there and there's no spaces, or it's full, and then you have to back up, and it's never been a good scheme, and it'll only continue to get worse to have those kinds of parking lots. The trade for a public plaza there, I think, is genius. I think it's really good, and I think it'll be transformative. So Eric has championed those things. The issue of the 25 feet is not, we can't deal with it in this project because the existing building is that. And our feeling was not to challenge that and take it on. But I think in future projects, there needs to be discussion why the exceptions are being made. Like, the exception that was made next door was a clear exception, right Scott?
Yeah, well, the public benefit that was associated with the project, largely the wider harbor walk and the plaza with the playground equipment in it that's in there was the justification for the increased height, so.
And I guess in my estimation, if we do that for those two things, for example, on every project on the Embarcadero, we wouldn't be able to see the water anymore. And I think that's a discussion that we should have, not tonight, but I'd like to agendize it at a future meeting. So if I could suggest, I think we can get somewhere pretty quick here. Oh, yeah, please, Joe.
I absolutely agree with your enumeration of the additional community benefits, and I do think in this case unquestionably, they justify the increased height of the building. Again, with respect to the setback, though, essentially...
The street sidewalk setback, yeah.
Again, that's a return to the argument that it's not economically feasible.
Okay.
And I, for one, I am not going to acknowledge that argument unless I can see the numbers in front of me that are testified to the economic infeasibility of it. And if I don't see those numbers, I'm not going to accept that argument. So at this point...
I guess, I guess my counter would be that, that was the original sort of discussion to say, let's open it up, you're going to take less rooms, how can we make sure you get at least seven? The number was not so much based on the income, but that we were asking a reduction in rooms, substantial reduction in rooms. So that would be anyhow why we stand apart, but that's also why I would support the no setback there. But what I would ask for, and maybe we can invite Eric up to respond, commissioners, if you want to do it, is the ability to open up where that stair is and the harbor walk is pinched down. That's a concern from the commissioners, it's a concern we got from, from the public in a well-described email. Is there an ability to widen up that pinch point? Would you, would you be willing to look at that?
Yes, we can look at that. I understand that you guys want the 10 feet between, you know, the stairways, and there's kind of a little pinch point. I think once you look at a couple of renderings of the drawings that we have, and when you're standing out in the plaza area, that doesn't look as small it is just because everything's open right there. And by the time we're done probably tweaking where the existing ramp is compared to that, I'm probably looking at that, that pinch point is like smaller than what everybody thinks on these, on these renderings.
So if, we have to make a condition to approve the project tonight. If we make a condition that you'll have 10 feet clear through there, you know, at a head height that works, that's legal, would you agree to that?
Correct, we can agree to that, we can figure that out. But one thing on the stairs and the location, my architect just reminded me, is that we have a 50-foot walkway in the basement, that we have to have that stairway right there where it is. So it would have to be us tweaking the exterior improvements to go ahead and modify that for your 10-foot, just so you guys are aware.
Well, I'm, I'm an architect too, I'm not sure I get that, but...
Two exits from the basement have to be 50 feet apart.
So that's a stair going down to the basement and one going up to the terrace, right?
Correct.
There's no reason why you can't slide it north.
Are you...
The travel distance would stay the same.
And if it went east, it would be shorter.
Actually, it would be shorter.
I think we're trying to get distance across different areas of the...
Here, come up here real quick.
Did you just open someone's comment?
I think you did.
I think I have something to say.
I think I do, too.
Eric, we want more room right here, right?
Yeah, well, he's going to...
So just move the stair in a little bit.
Or move it east.
Well, he said he can't.
So he's saying if you move it...
He can, it's closer.
That it'll, it'll be too close to the elevator, because the elevator...
So if you move it over here, that's better. You can either move it that way or...
So that's the issue that he's, that he's potentially running into.
Do access to the south.
Yeah, and they have to be...
Have to be equidistant or half of the, half of the size.
Okay, thank you. I think we've got resolve.
I have an answer for one of Joe's questions.
Okay, please.
With respect to the umbrellas impeding, impeding into the right-of-way, there's actually a condition on the conditions put forth by planning. Condition number three, conditions to project such that no tables or dining encroachments may, may project into the 15-foot wide right-of-way. So it is there. That also answers my own question about the stage. I was looking for the answer, and I, that's where it is. I think, I think you guys would probably agree, despite the Exhibit B, which I believe is the applicant's notes, Exhibit A trumps Exhibit B.
Right, right, yeah. And in value, in evaluating the project, staff did add multiple planning conditions to reflect the desire and the direction that we've received from Planning Commission on other waterfront projects, to be consistent with general plan, LCP zoning, and also Coastal Commission. So we, we looked at it all.
So, are we getting close to a motion or no?
The, kind of what's left up in the air a little bit is the discussion around leasing of the public plaza or not, and...
So I asked staff to consider that. What do you think? How do we resolve that into this motion tonight?
Well, I mean, I'm not exactly sure what you're, what you're looking for. I mean, we, we don't have, we don't have a lease with Mr. Newton, and we won't have one until he gets quite a ways down the road with the Coastal Commission. I mean, he submits his application, and then we start negotiating lease terms. So that's why we don't have it worked out yet, because we're not there yet. But I don't view this improvement as any, as different than any other public improvement the city maintains, and neither does the Public Works Department. You know, they, they said, you know, it'll be public and we'll maintain it. And I, my, my counter to that was actually, well, we probably want to have the applicant because they're, they're expressing a desire to use it, you know, somewhat frequently, that we would want to have them maybe helping us out with some of the maintenance over time.
So your confidence is that what Eric is proposing as part of the public benefit, which is to create a DG plaza to do the curbs, gutters, drainage, provide electricity through his service, that will be negotiated how it's paid for, but all that infrastructure cost is now part of the public benefit?
Yeah.
And that is, I think, substantial, and certainly enough to go forward with compared to what other projects have offered us. That's the combination of the view to the water, public terrace, you know, extension of the harbor walk and a public plaza, this is probably some of the most community benefit I've seen in my tenure here.
Me as well. I don't think we have anything, Cindy and I were, sorry, were talking about this earlier today.
Yeah.
And we really, I, you know, we couldn't point to something else that did this much on a public benefit side of things, at least in our opinions.
And I would agree with that, too. And for context, I mean, when a previous, when the city embarked on the Centennial Plaza design around 2016 and 2017, there was great community input about what they'd like to see in the space. We had these, you know, great afterimages and products of like what we'd like to do, but the issue was is the city didn't have the funding to actually go now and create this plaza space. And so that's set idle for years, and then low and behold, you have a redevelopment of a lease site that's in an opportunity where they need to provide public benefit, and the city has a need. Like, our public has told us they'd like to see this as a plaza area, and our, our general plan says remove street parking in this area. So I mean, from staff's perspective, it was, it was a win-win, and that's how we presented it to the commission for your consideration.
Yes, and I think I'm saying I agree with that. So commissioners?
I have one, one more spare.
Joe.
Thinking about this. The additional community benefits that the applicant is offering are indeed very generous, more so than have historically given to the city. We should be mindful of that, and that could be very significant in establishing the expectations for subsequent developments of second stories. You know, that weighs, that weighs heavily with me because, again, if you will, the benefits are his obligation in order to get the height extension, and that's really unrelated, again, to the Embarcadero setback. But I could rationalize this by saying, in exchange for establishing, you know, a new high in expectations as to what additional community benefits are, that we might sacrifice that this time. I admit, I don't like doing it, though.
It's a, it's a subjective argument, because I think the, although I wasn't here when you guys debated this last time.
Yeah.
The sawtooth roof idea in my, my head hearkens back to things you see in Monterey or things you see in San Francisco, it's sort of an industrial vibe, and the...
And the rectangle, let's call it, of this warehouse also, of the current structure, the current design, also hearkens back to a warehouse design. Now, mind you, it's sided in different material, but it's sniffing at the heels of an old warehouse.
Yes.
And that's a bad metaphor, but if you were to step it back, the second story, then it would just look like every other condominium development in my mind, whereas I like it with this big vertical dumb facade on the front. I think that does have a certain flavor. It's a subjective decision to-
I actually like it too. I think architecturally, the bluntness of it is much better than the fussiness of having to step it back. So it's, you know, again-
In this location and in the vernacular style of what an old fishing warehouse might have looked like if it were designed by someone from 2020 in Dwell Magazine, you know, it's a, you can't, you have to make these hybrid sort of decisions.
If I could offer that, like, we're kind of helping the, let's call it, the simplicity of the style that we're suggesting by allowing that. So I mean, that has another benefit to me, that I think it works aesthetically. I agree with Eric.
I also have no problem with the two suites facing the water. I don't care which way the suites face, that's the applicant's feeling, if you want. In my opinion, he can go whichever way he wants. They also, each suite has a relatively high privacy fence, and I would suggest that we don't require those privacy fences to be that high. If he wants to lower those fences-
That's the applicant's option.
Yeah, but we're not demanding that those fences be a certain height based on this-
No, in fact, we set a maximum.
Yeah, okay.
We said they couldn't go higher than six feet.
I do think that we should allow smaller signs, and I'd like some feedback on that from you all with respect to the minimum size requirement. I mean, like, for instance, the signs that go on the staircase that are going to say, this is a public viewing deck, are not, we don't demand that those be four feet square, do we?
No, we don't. Those coastal access signs are 24 by 36, and coastal does dictate that sign sign. But the pub signs, the city's sign ordinance does say minimum four square feet or two by two. So they're proposing like two-by-two metal signs. It's a narrow building, so, you know, maybe there is the argument that two signs would be too much, and then only one sign, but certainly you could accomplish the same thing if you said, okay, it's not wide enough to meet the 30-foot test and the 15-foot test, so instead, let's have them be three square feet instead of four. They're two-by-two. I think originally, they were proposed at a lesser amount. Certainly, the coffee shop sign, you know, is advertising the coffee shop, the other one just is a duplicate hotel sign, and it's kind of directing you to go around the corner and check into the hotel.
Mike?
I'm getting ready to make a motion whenever you're ready, but I just-
I'm ready to adjourn.
I'm just going to say this, based upon what everybody else said, this is probably the best development we've had regarding public benefits. And that's what somebody was trying to say in public comments, is the fact we got a written email saying we should follow this moving forward as a way to get these things done. So based upon that, I'm going to go ahead and recommend that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit, combine Concept Precise CUP 2209 based upon our ARC review and design review, architectural review and design review, because they were very specific. See, that's why I don't want to drill down unless you guys want to, because there was a lot of things we were putting in there. But we did do architectural review, design review, but I'm making a motion to approve based upon those elements. And we do have a precise concept.
We do need one-
Need the punch list.
The stair, that you need to put a condition in there-
Sure.
That the stair will be adjusted so there's a clear 10-foot-
Yeah, and that's what I meant, you guys can help me with that, so I'll add that.
Seven feet high, maybe?
I'd say eight feet. 10-foot wide to an eight-foot height.
Okay, good, I'll add that.
All right, so that's the one condition, and we're comfortable with staff negotiating maintenance issues and hours-
Yes.
-with the applicant.
I would also add, with your guys' agreement, that the signage that we've been discussing, the two little, I don't know what to call them.
The blade signs?
Blade signs.
Yep.
Should be allowed to be smaller, what that size is.
You know, Scott, we can't change sign ordinance here.
You can with a master sign program, and you can-
But I mean, tonight, we can't.
Because part of your overall design review of what you think makes sense signage-wise for this building.
Given the widths and the leak-
And we included findings in the resolution, it's just there's no specific condition. Yeah.
I mean, I'm happy to leave it up to the applicant at this point, but-
Yeah, me too, to be honest.
Okay, so we'll leave it off.
No, I mean, the applicant, the proposal for the architecture, the elevation, the signage, it's good. It works.
So I have a motion, I guess that's-
Are we doing anything with this?
What I'm trying to say is I think the applicant wants some smaller signs than what he's being requested, I think. Am I correct in my assumptions?
Just, he's nodding yes, so let's make that a deviation in this case, and it's an exception.
So the staff request was, is it okay to be less than 30 feet apart, and is it okay to be less than 15 feet from the edge of the-
And we're saying yes.
Yes.
That's part of your motion, Mike?
Yes.
All right.
And I'd like to say, the reason I felt comfortable making the motion is because when we've given it to staff, Scott, and you before, you've made sure that you've met what we were trying to achieve here.
Right.
You're very specific about what we discussed, so that's why I don't feel I need to do a punch list, but we can do it. You heard what we said, capture it, if there's a problem, come back to us.
Okay, so we've got a motion? Do we have a second? Joe?
Friendly, I'm in that still. I'm stuck on these signs, I'm sorry. We didn't specify the square feet. So are we still at four feet, or are we now allowing it to be a little bit more open?
I thought you wanted it to be flexible, is what I was thinking.
Yeah, okay. That word is in there, I just want to make sure the flexible is in there.
We'll write that in.
Okay.
And then the motion also includes the option for the alternate second-floor plan?
Yes, I forgot that. And I believe the applicant knows what they want.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we've got a first and a second. Any further discussion? Joe?
First time I've been faced with this situation. Well, I want it for the record, that if in fact I do vote to support this application, it's to preserve the integrity of this one particular industrial design, and that I am not establishing a precedent where we can sort of casually-
Well, it's more complex than that, because it's also part of an ability to balance the architectural resolve, right? To get the rooms to fit, to get the opening. So it was a combination of that, which led to an aesthetic, which I think that Eric and I are sort of saying is a good one.
Okay, again, well, I can only repeat, without the economics supporting information, I will vote to approve based on the architectural aesthetics.
Okay, thanks. I think we've got a motion, no further discussions?
And your motion, you did say that to adopt Resolution 19-23?
I thought it was-
Did you include that?
CUP 220-09?
Yes, and by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 19-23-
Add that, yeah.
-to the added conditions as stated?
Sure.
Okay. Are you ready?
Yep, there it is, 19-23.
Okay, thank you.
I think we have a motion, we have a second. Please pull the commission.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Graffia?
Yes.
Chairperson Rochin?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
And Eric, thank you. I think it's a very good project. With that, I think we can go to the next item. New business? Do we have any? Hearing none, unfinished business?
Well, can I back up to the new business?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm just trying to come down a little, not get back in the saddle. Okay, we did get an email, and we want to get our public benefits memo on the agenda, Scott. I mean, I think, you know, we've been waiting, we understand how you've been busy, but we'd like to have it earlier next year, the earlier the better. I'll leave that up to Scott.
Well, we'll make that happen. I owe you.
Thank you, thank you. So we did get new business, thank you.
Scott's been struggling a little bit the past couple weeks. We've got to give him a bit of a break.
No problem, we got it. Thank you.
Unfinished business, anything we want to raise, commissioners? Planning Commissioner comments and future agenda items? I'd like to list that we put on our next meeting an agenda item around the second-floor exception for the Embarcadero, the raising the height to 25 feet, that we have a discussion here to sort of understand why the exceptions are proliferating, why it's a good thing, or why we should stay to the original language. So can we agendize that, Scott?
Yes.
I think we'd like a half-hour discussion. And then we can fold that into the master plan effort if we come out with anything constructive.
That sounds good, comment on that. We don't have any items for the next meeting.
Well, when I say the next meeting, we're not going to meet on the second.
Yeah, so that's what I was saying, I was kind of putting-
So it'll be the meeting after that?
Yeah, I'll put it on that, and then we'll see if we can also maybe get your fellow benefits memo on there.
All right.
We have a bunch of them on there.
And just for the record, so you will be sending out an email saying the January 2nd meeting has been counseled, oh, January, yes, 2nd meeting has been canceled. Will that be going out to us and, you know, that?
Like we do every meeting that we cancel, we send it out to everybody, yeah?
Good.
Yes.
Because I will be in Hawaii.
Oh, nice. Very jealous.
Okay.
Any other comments, commissioners, agenda items? Community director, development director?
Don't-
Tell us how you're feeling.
I'm ready to take some more aspirin and go home. My ribs are pretty sore.
We're sorry to hear, yeah.
Yeah, other than that, wishing you all happy holidays, and we'll see you at our second meeting in January.
It's been a good year, I'm sorry we don't have Asia here with us tonight to say happy holidays.
Yeah, and I want to notice that Cindy got manager job. She's now our manager of whatever. She went from senior planner to manager, is that right?
She's the city's planning manager as of about six months ago?
Yes, but I like the title, manager of whatever.
Yeah, well, and by the way, the reason I say that is you guys have done a great job. Keep it up, you'll get a promotion, maybe replace that guy over there.
There you go.
Yeah!
And as long as we're thanking everybody, let's thank Chris and Anthony for their hard work this past year. And we have to thank our special, you know, always here audience, Terry and Betty. Thank you, guys, thanks for staying. I think we're done with the year, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourn.
Good night.